He'd have had it all already if he'd behaved.
Took it off for two days.
Oh, so you're not even, you're not even following the doctor.
No, I'm bad.
He did, he missed it.
I've got to, uh, I've got to go to Friday for my stomach problems, my liver problems.
Oh wow.
Early on my mess. You know what they were saying? But I'm so lucky, really considered. Compared with other people.
We just got to put, well, yeah. Look. You know, we started talking about liver.
Yeah.
Slime.
We don't have some good.
Okay. Where's Teresa? Jacket? Okay, everybody ready? We're missing Brian and Teresa.
Teresa?
I don't know.
Anybody heard from Teresa?
I haven't. Can I have her put in this?
Okay, let me take one minute and text her just in case. I remember Walter Camp, hence it's, um, usually his mind. Okay.
Did you get any damage, Con?
Hmm?
Did you get any damage?
No, not really. No, no. Um, you know, we had a couple trees.
Apparently this speed over that access has gone on for many, many, many years.
To follow our pants, but they were small trees and actually fell, re-badged.
Oh, here she is, perfect. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'd like to call tonight's City of Oxford Board of Commissioners Agenda Meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, October third, twenty twenty-two, and it is five thirty-two P M. Sorry, I can read.
Oh, sorry.
But I wasn't thinking and reading at the same time. I apologize for that. Uh, we are assembled here in the Commissioners' Boardroom of City Hall. If you have an electronic device, I would like to ask you to mute it or turn it off at this time. And we are assembled here to set the agenda for the Tuesday, October eleventh, twenty twenty-two regular session. And before we do that, why don't we've got reminders on the first page. This Friday, Coffee with the Cop at one seventeen Main Street. Is that Strongarm Chief? One seventeen Main Street, is that Strongarm? Coffee with the Cop?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, nine to eleven A M. Friday night.
I was reading, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Classic Park Cruisin' in Little John Street, five to eight P M. October ninth through the fifteenth, Fire Prevention Week. Monday, October thirty-first, Oxford Spooktacular, three to five, that's downtown. Uh, and the trick-or-treat hours are from six to eight P M. Thank you for setting that already, Chief. And then, uh, November eleventh, we're closed for Veterans Day. Uh, and I see that we have the presentation from you, Chief. And so was it your intention that we just review this now at our leisure?
That is entirely up to the board.
When, Ford, would you like to take some time to ponder this because we have a lot of information? And so we just thank you and your staff for the time you put into it to, uh, pull it together for us. Okay, great. Then we will move on, uh, to the agenda. And the normal things in the beginning, delegations, Employee of the Month, Yard of the Month, Yard of the Month Grand Prize, Fire Prevention Week. Uh, City Engineer will update us on infrastructure and finance discussion. Any questions on any of this, colleagues? And I fail to acknowledge, I apologize, Commissioner Khan is out of town and the underswaki is not at tonight's meeting. And I apologize for that. Moving forward to public hearings. A, uh, to hear citizen input on a text amendment to allow townhomes under the Conservation Development Standard for the G R five zoning classification. And B, to consider approving that. Do any of you have any questions on this item at this time?
Not at this time. They can get a lot of phone calls about this one, though.
Oh, have you?
Yes.
Yes.
A lot of phone calls.
Phone calls, yeah.
Oh, with respect to Thorndale?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, um, it might be, public hearing is a good thing.
Public hearing is a good thing?
Yeah.
Okay. Excellent. Um, I done, so that's A and B. Moving on to city business. A, call, consider calling for a public hearing to hear citizen input on a request for the conditional rezoning of sixty-three plus or minus acres. The sixty-three plus or minus acres border properties along the outer loop, Hillsborough Street, North Country Club Drive, and Clover Lane, uh, from residential agriculture and G R five to G R ten. Uh, is that the same?
Same thing, yeah.
Property. Okay. And as a condition of rezoning the properties, the owner proposes to develop the property at a density level of three and a quarter dwelling units, which will all be single-family dwelling units. Do any of you all have any questions on this item at this time?
No, I only, if it's going from G R ten, five to G R ten, and he only wants to put three and a half units, why is he going to want G R ten?
I don't have an answer for that. Commissioner Lumpkins?
Um, I was told that it was only like forty-some acres. About somebody else. Are we sure, um, I haven't.
On the size? So your question is, are we sure about the size?
Right.
Um, Ms. Hart, do you want to comment on that?
I'll make sure that you have the, um, the full information tomorrow and with math. But, um, I'll make sure to talk about the project management as well, but I'll send you P D Ls.
Okay.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Is it, uh, possible? I'm looking, um, is it possible that the amount to be developed is the forty-four acres, that the entire property is sixty-three-ish?
I'm sorry, but I can't remember the quantity of projects running together.
I'm, I'm right.
In addition to P D Ls and all that, um, the project is open and I do do all the rest for the whole board.
We've got those.
So hopefully I can get you the all this in the September meeting event with the very detail filed through the public.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is that okay for right now, Commissioner?
Yeah, that makes sense what you said, that they might not be developing all that.
And, um, Commissioner Toby, do you have a follow-up for Ms. Hart based on your question of not? I mean, because usually you go up to, I mean.
You go from ten to five.
Our, our requests for going to ten have been to include townhomes. So, Ms. Hart, do you have an understanding of why they want, excuse me, to increase to ten?
I don't want to really answer no more than to say get more lots out, more lots out of it. But I don't want to answer for the, I think he should be responsible for it.
Okay. And they'll be there. Okay. Thank you. Item B, consider approving a text amendment to allow townhomes under the Conservation Development Standard for the G R five, um, zoning class. So isn't that the same as item B under public hearings?
Is it?
Yeah.
It is, yeah.
So it's a question of deciding where you want it?
Yeah, let's leave it under public hearings.
Right, okay, thank you. Cross that, be out. And we move to C, which is consider placing a sixty-day moratorium for the new residential developments requested by the planning board. At the last planning me, meeting, uh, held on the twenty-sixth. That was a week ago. The recommendation was made to place a sixty-day moratorium on all new residential development. Uh, recognizing that the comprehensive plan is being updated, that we should slow residential development that is not already being reviewed. Are there any questions from any of you from Ms. Hart at this time?
What does already being reviewed mean?
They're in the pipeline?
Okay.
Meaning that something has been submitted to Ms. Hart. I shouldn't answer. I should let Ms. Hart answer.
Well, I can tell you, um, right off the bat, that, uh, um, hot property is a different hot property. That's already, um, in the pipeline. I think we've had a couple of neighborhood meetings be observed. They've done the T I A studies. They've, um, just waiting to see it also. Out of all of them, I know that, um, we're currently reviewing that and we've had quite a few meetings with them. I can't think of anything else that they've had that's under the review process currently. Other than the hot property.
Is, is this the kind of thing that we would want a public hearing on?
Um, the moratorium, I'd say no, not in terms of a public hearing. I mean, they just sent the technical requests and you say yes and no.
Okay. Any other questions?
I, I was just wondering, the, what's the reason behind wanting the moratorium? I mean, what's, what's, what's happened to make them feel like a moratorium is necessary?
Um, I think they want to slow things down. Um, you know, we have twelve members of the planning board and someone may have different reasons for the president. I think someone's like written an article, um, for one planning board that was as a block. Um, they would want things slowed down. And then others just felt like that, um, that we should slow things down. We got another project that we approved and possibly slowing some projects down is way too much. So hopefully that will be included in those minutes that I'm gonna spend.
Right. Be good to get those.
Okay. Be good for now. Oh, yes, Commissioner Gilry.
Well, I, I am just curious, what is the impact of all the projects that we've already approved? And the variance that many of them, or conditions that many of them have taken on? Will that be reflected in the new comprehensive plan or the U D O? And will, which one will be rewritten? The U D A, I mean, the U D O or the comprehensive plan?
The U D O was rewritten and adopted last year.
Right.
So that's already in place.
Right.
Comprehensive plan that's pretty well updated.
But if we're allowing all of these variances to what we've already written, why not just rewrite what the U D O is saying then? I mean, I mean, because after a while this gets a little confusing.
Well, not really because still the comprehensive plan that we already have in place is, that's what, what we, um, got to go and adapt. So I don't think it, um, is confusing when we already have one, we just need to update it.
But if everyone, but, but many of the projects that, that are, that are on, that are in the process right now, everyone's seeking some variation of what we currently have written?
Well, you know, you don't have the choice of saying yes and no to it. You don't have to approve it. So, it doesn't, you just make the best decision based on information in tonight.
And I think there would be hope that careful work on the comprehensive plan would mean that this board, combined with all the input from stakeholders, that we are really clear on what type of development we want where. So that's expressed in the comprehensive plan so that going forward, there might be less requests for, um, uh, special conditional use districts.
I think my biggest concern now is that my initial understanding of conservation was that it would be denser. And maybe, and, and maybe in my mind, I thought it would be a little bit more affordable in, in some way. But I'm beginning to realize that that is not what is, is, is what I, what I see is happening or what I think is gonna happen. And I'm thinking, how do we continue to, to meet the needs of, of our, our community as it is right now versus all the people that will be coming? Because our community is right for them now, but not our current citizens, or many of our current citizens.
So you're talking about the board of houses?
Yeah, I am.
So I think that's a kind of a different conversation that this board may need to start thinking about. I know you've all talked about the proof of the, the more of the truth. But, um, that's something you all can, can kind of study and think about. But I don't think these develop this. I don't think it is still the, the same when you say a board of houses. You know, it depends on what the definition is. If you have larger box size, does that make it more affordable? That's the point. So I think it's something that this board can kind of study to see how to sample it.
Are you good for now, Commissioner Gilry? No, but I'll, I'll revisit it. Okay. Thank you. Uh, so we move forward to item D, consider approving the proposed changes for the public works meeting room rentals. And you have, we all have at our place a, um, presentation that our public works director has prepared for us to review as well as the items, the bullet points that she reviewed in, um, the recreation committee meeting that was held last month. Do any of you have any questions on any of these items at this time? Or any of the points made?
I have one comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I was only passing presentations to the people that weren't at the committee meeting because everyone else got out there.
Well, I'm grateful. Okay, thank you very much. So if you were at the meeting, you don't have it. I, so I might be the only one.
It was discussed at length.
Okay, yes. So are there, are there any questions by any of my colleagues for Ms. Cheek at this time? Okay, thank you. And then I am exceedingly grateful. A picture tells it's worth a thousand words, so thank you very much. Item E, consider authorizing the city manager to sign five task orders for the Division of Water Infrastructure Golden Leaf. And Brick, can I ask what V R I C stands for?
Building Resilient Instructure Community System.
Okay, um, if I can, uh, just ask you that by next week's agenda, if you could provide the full name for Cindy, that would be lovely. Thank you very much. Brick FEMA funded projects and approved staff to work with consultants to define the project studies and the construction project engineering tasks. So you see that there are, um, there's a D W I asset inventory assessment for water. There is a D W I asset inventory assessment for sewer. There is a D W I Phase Five Sewer Improvements, uh, which I don't think we've given you a suitable level of applause because this is a significant amount. I think when we first heard about it, it was just five hundred thousand of grant forgiveness. But now there's, I mean, of loan forgiveness, but there's, um, a five million dollar loan grant in there as well. Thank you very much. So, uh, Phase Five Sewer Improvements for nine point five million. Golden Leaf Stormwater Master Plan, a hundred and twenty-five thousand. And Brick FEMA Flood Vulnerability and Risk Assessment Study as well. Uh, do any of you all have any questions for the manager or Ms. Ratliff at this time?
Just want to thank them for getting these grants and, uh, these low-cost loans. I mean, it's amazing.
We don't have these yet, we're just.
Well, but, uh, they're in the pipeline.
We're seeking.
I, I think. But, uh, it's a lot of work, thank you.
All good.
I, yeah.
Good work.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Yes, I remember the asset inventory assessment awards and I just, um, I, I saw it a while ago, the one for the sewer improvements. So it's outstanding. Thank you very much. And then we move on to consent agenda, finance report from our finance director in approving, uh, the minutes from all meetings in September. In addition, there is a change in the minutes for March fifteenth. And, uh, you can see, uh, what it is. And I'm gonna go over this because I was actually confused. So apparently one motion included the annexation ordinance and the zoning classification. It was not two separate motions?
It was one.
Okay. That, my bad. Thank you very much. Okay, any questions on any of these items? Okay. Well, with that, we've gone over the calendar of upcoming events. So with that, I will ask my colleagues, starting with Commissioner Gilry. Is there anything that you would like to add? That was a no? Okay. Commissioner Toby?
I'd like to know when we're gonna be discussing the Mural Ordinance. I think that was passed in committee, wasn't it?
If, there were.
Can we put it on the agenda for next week? Can we add it to the agenda?
It's under review.
It's under review?
Yes.
Okay, so, all right then.
Okay, so, I'm, I'm, I'm right, making a note, Commissioner.
And one other thing, I just want to thank the city for their cleanup after the terrible winds we've had. I think their public works are doing a great job. Some people might say it's a bit slow, but I mean, with the workers they've got, it's not slow. It's, it's pretty good, pretty good going.
I don't think it's slow at all.
No, but some people, you know, I've had, well, when are they gonna come and collect my trash? Well, you know, you're in line.
There's, there's a lot of.
There's a lot of stuff out.
A lot of stuff out.
Stuff out there.
A lot of hard work.
That's right. Um, and I would like to add to that, to Mr. Blasco, that we had a complaint about water accumulating because of those erosion control things around storm drains on Main Street. And they were out really quickly addressing that just great. And didn't want me to go out and address it myself, so, very thoughtful. Uh, Commissioner Bridges?
Um, I, I would like to see something on the agenda that, um, reflects, um, the award that you recently received, Mayor, for, um, um, at the last COG banquet. I think that it was a well-deserved award. And I think that there should be some acknowledgement of the fact that you received that award. For one thing. And the other thing that I would ask is that we have a closed session um, to discuss, um, progress relative to Oxford Park and, um, the issues related to Oxford Park.
Okay. Um, can I, can I request maybe that we, we don't make it an agenda item? But if you wanna pipe up and say anything, that would, I, I'm a little uncomfortable with an agenda item. For, for me.
For you, which one?
For, no.
Recognition of her.
For, for the recognition of me, I'm.
Oh, I, that's fine. However you wanna do it.
Yeah.
Is there, is there a possibility you could bring your award to the meeting?
Yeah, it's downstairs in my office. I can, I can do that.
I'm gonna put it under delegation, Cindy.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. So you all are ignoring me?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
That happens sometimes.
Well, thank you. I, I was. Okay. Thank you.
I know you're modest, Mayor, but.
Okay, moving right along. Um, I'm gonna go because I have something and then we'll just keep going down the line. I had a call today, I, I've had a number of calls about speeding on Raleigh Road. And I know I've sent emails periodically about, what about this kind of speed table? Or can we do this? And all of those questions are still out there. But in the meantime, a proposal came back that the, the request today was, what about making it a four-way stop? And we certainly know that, that adding stop signs on, uh, High Street as it turns into Forest was very effective in Spring Street. I don't know if Raleigh is more complicated because it's a state road. I, I think it might be. But is that something, you know, who, who looks into that? Is that something we can look into? Because the speeding there is, it's a long, straight downhill road that's residential.
We could check. Where would we propose the four-way stop be created?
Well, they were asking for it at, so they were asking for stop signs to be added at, um, at Front and Henderson, which is kind of an unusual little intersection. It's not a straight right-angle intersection. Henderson kind of goes at an, at an angle off. But you know, I do wonder if there's value in doing the same approach as we did on Spring and Forest. I certainly almost flew through the stop sign on Spring Street the first, the first time I encountered it. So down by Franklin Street is another, there's a T intersection at Franklin. Um, but it is, that, that's a, a road that people take with alacrity. So you look at that. Okay, great. Mayor Protem.
Um, I was just visualizing the streets. Um, first, I'm looking forward to all the growth that Oxford is, um, expecting. But in that, we need to really be considering our employment for the city of Oxford in all categories, um, because of the growth. Um, and I think it's something we need to do before the growth take place. There's no need to get the population and then try to fill the positions. We need to be looking, seriously looking at, I, I know there's been quite an extensive conversation about a police department and that, I hope that continues, that is gonna continue. But also all departments, all departments. Because as our population grows, our recreation department is gonna grow. Our engineering department is gonna grow. Our, um, Ms. Hart apartment is gonna grow. Our fire department, everything's gonna grow. And we need to have employees in place, um, to accommodate our growth. And hopefully, some, be situated so that some of the people that are moving here will not be only moving because of our lower tax base, but they may find something about Oxford that they wanna become employed in Oxford. And keep all of. that they want to become employed in Oxford and keep all of their money in Oxford.
That'd be a beautiful thing.
You know? Because I'm quite sure a lot of the people that are gonna be relocating here are gonna be qualified in some of the positions that we have open. So we need to start searching now.
That's right.
Wait and not wait. And to all the workers, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I understand.
Okay. Commissioner Bullock?
Nothing.
Commissioner Lumpkins?
Um, nothing. I did want to thank Amy again for taking us out to the place water treatment plant. That was pretty eye-opening and I enjoyed it, an Oscar as well.
Yeah, ditto. It's very impressive, isn't it? I'm sorry I wasn't able to make it out to be with you. I've been a few times before, but it's a pretty amazing place.
Yeah, I didn't realize how much went into that, so.
Yeah. Great. I'm glad you were... Who was able to go on that?
It was me, Bronn, and Teresa.
Great. Super. Thank you. Thank you for doing that. Mr. Thornton? Anything you would like to add or comment on?
I think the only thing we missed in our schedule of events is we've got Masonic Home coming.
On the eighth. I was gonna mention that.
This weekend. Coming weekend, right?
Yes, this Saturday.
And we're working on the Veterans Day Parade as well.
When is that scheduled for?
Typically, that's the Sunday before the Monday. So what is that, the tenth?
Tenth.
Okay. Okay. And that's gonna be in the afternoon, probably? Okay. Eleven-ten, wonderful. Okay. Parade. Great. Okay. Mr. Burnett?
Here I am.
Well, with that, I want to thank everybody for being here. Thanks, staff, for all of your hard work. Thank you, Chief. And Catherine, for the work that you did to pull this together for us. I'm sure we will all be reading it carefully. And is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Toby. Any discussion? And we stand adjourned. Now you want to tell me that.